PM pursuant to Mass General Law, Section 30A. I'm sorry, Chapter 30A, Section 20B, following Governor Baker's Declaration of State of Emergency in the Commonwealth arising from the COVID-19 pandemic, the committee will need virtually utilizing technology. Our meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast on Cohasset 143 cable television. We are not on Facebook tonight live streaming because the planning board is on their live streaming and we only have capability in the town to have one, one live stream on the town Facebook page. While participation in Cohasset public meetings, we request anyone trying to log in or watching, we ask you to follow these basic best practices. These include connecting to meetings by using your web browser, which is Google Chrome or another browser. Additionally, you can download and install the Zoom app. When connecting to Cohasset virtual meetings, you'll have the opportunity to communicate questions to the board or committee chair via the Zoom question and answer communication pane found in the Zoom meeting portal. If you experience technical issues while entering or within the meeting, you can raise your virtual hand from the menu for assistance by the host or co-hosts. Those individuals connecting via phone will only be able to listen to the meeting and not interact with the meeting unless the host allows for audio questions to be submitted. Signing into a Cohasset public meeting, we request you utilize your first and last name followed by your street address. This will allow for the host or board chair to acknowledge you by name when reading questions and answering those questions submitted. Additionally, by utilizing your computer or device browser, you can view any documents or information shared within the meeting via the host or chair, sharing a document, presentation, or desktop. Phone calls will not be able to view this level of meeting business information. Additional information may be found in the meeting agenda posting or on the website as to the requirements for attending a meeting as an attendee. Best practices suggest a good internet connection, if your panelist, a good quality microphone is suggested, and possibly a noise cancelling headset for best audio listening. Attendees can submit questions via the Q and A chat window within Zoom. All questions will be reviewed and addressed in a way the board chair feels adequate. Off-point questions may be dismissed without acknowledgement. Attendees will see all or any questions once they're answered. All meetings are recorded for accuracy per open meeting laws. By joining these meetings, you can send to these recordings, including all dialogue that occurs either verbally or through the question and answers and response options. So can I have a call to order? Well, and first, I'd like to welcome Lydia St. Ange, our newest school committee member. And we look forward to serving with her on, on the committee. So can I have a call to order, please?
Do you want to motion, Ellen?
No, I'd like, I'd like to call, we have to call it to order. I need a, an accounting of who's present.
Oh, present Craig McClellan.
Present Ashley Colery.
Present Ellen Mar.
Present Lydia St. Ange.
Thank you. And now I will turn it over to Patrick for the school committee reorganization.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ellen, you threw me because I thought you were going to do that part.
Oh, sorry. Do you want me to?
No, I, I, that's what I was talking about. My script up. Hold on one second. Yeah, that, that's what I was referring to.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought you meant opening the meeting. I'm sorry. So just for the record, Paul Kearney just joined the meeting at 7:11 PM.
Okay, I'm ready now. So excuse, excuse the Zoom technology errors. So in the absence of the chairperson, I call the meeting to order. The time, I guess we did this already, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first item on the agenda is the appointment of a new chairperson. Do I hear a motion to open nominations for selecting a new chairperson of the classes school committee?
Oh, moved.
I'll hear a second. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, great. All in favor?
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Craig McClellan.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Lydia St. Ange.
Okay. And do I hear a name for nomination of a chairperson for school committee?
I would like to nominate Craig McClellan to be chair of the school committee.
So Craig McClellan has been nominated as for potential chair of the school committee. Do I hear a second?
I'll strike a second.
I'm sorry, did I hear a second?
Oh my goodness.
This is the longest pause for a second. Just kidding.
Second.
Under Craig McClellan.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, Paul, Paul Kearney.
Who seconded for the record?
Lydia St. Ange, but Paul was holding up his fingers.
Yeah.
No problem with this.
I know. And Paul, I moved you to a panelist, but now you're showing up twice on the screen.
Can I have a point of order here? Do I have to, so first of all, Ellen, is it, is it not, is the same person not able to be the chair two years in a row? And this is assuming, of course, you want to do it. And if you don't want to do it, that may be obvious since you just nominated me. I don't know, but.
You know, Craig, every, every board functions a little bit differently and there's no set rules on how to do it. For instance, the Board of Selectmen, typically whomever is vice chair in the following year becomes, you know, you have to go through the same process. You have to be nominated and seconded and have a roll call vote. But, but their tradition, if you will, is that the vice chair moves into the chair position. This committee, over the years that I have been watching from the audience or at the table, has functioned in very different manners. Some, in some years, the same person has been chair for a couple of years in a row because that is the desire, the wish of the committee. And in other years, it follows an open nomination process, not necessarily the vice chair stepping in. I'm going to backtrack a second on this year on the Board of Selectmen. Dr. Paul Schubert was last year's vice chair, but due to his commitments at the hospital and during the pandemic, he recused himself from that position because he just felt he couldn't perform the duties of the chair sufficiently with the requirements he has as a doctor during these, you know, very stressful times for all of our medical personnel, you know, in our town and our state. So it, it varies.
Okay. Because I was just about to nominate you when you nominated me. So I didn't, I didn't know if it was something that you still had an interest in doing, if you were already serving that capacity. That's why I may, you know, if, if not, then okay, then we have to do another, select another chairperson. And I'm happy to try and fulfill the role or fulfill the responsibilities. But if you still want to do it and you've already been doing it, you know, before we vote on anyone else, I would just sort of like to know that. Or if you could use a break at this point, because it is, I think, a very, very, you know, time consuming and a position that requires a great deal of commitment. So if you, if you want to break, that's understandable as well. But if it's something that you are interested in continuing to do, before we vote on me, I would just kind of want to know that.
Yeah, it's not, you know, I'm not one that's ever shied away from work or from hard work or from commitment or, or anything like that. I, I have made a decision, and I've talked with Patrick about it, that it's not a role that I wish to continue in for this year. It's my last year on the committee. I am not planning on running again for school committee after this term. And I, I also have some work obligations that are ramping up. And I think it would be best for the committee if there was someone else leading the committee going into, you know, the year after 2022, 2023, whatever. It's, it's not, it's not something that I feel comfortable doing with this committee at this point in time.
Okay, that's, that's just helpful to know, Ellen. And thank you for that. I didn't need to put you on the spot. I just didn't really feel like I had enough information to, I don't know, I guess I don't even vote because it's about me. So anyway, thank you.
You can vote, Craig. You're, you're welcome. And you can, you can vote for yourself. There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay. All right. So then I'll, I'll thank you for that. I'll proceed. So I guess now we'll, we'll vote on having Craig McClellan as the new chair for the Cohasset School Committee. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Lydia St. Ange.
Speaking of Craig.
Abstain Craig McClellan. Sorry, I was, I was muted.
No worries. Okay. Well, for the record, we have four, four, I am one abstained. So now Craig, the chairperson would take over. So congratulations, Greg. And you would be asking for nominations to elect a vice chairperson and secretary.
Okay, I can seek nominations at this time for vice chairperson. I nominate Ashley Colery for vice chairperson. Is there a second?
I would like to second that.
Okay, there's been a nomination for Ashley Colery as vice chairperson in the school committee for the upcoming year. I'd ask for a roll call vote on this. Aye, Craig McClellan.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Lydia St. Ange.
I, Ashley Colery.
All right, that's obviously unanimous. So Ashley Colery will be the vice chairperson. Moving on to secretary, I'd ask for nomination for secretary. And I will note that the former chairperson superintendent placed on the agenda, the roles of the secretary, I don't know if we want to revisit that right now. I don't know if anyone has access to that document that was included.
I have that. So many things open right now. Just find it. I got it. Okay, hold on one second. Bear with me. Okay, here we go. The role, it's up there on the screen. You can see the role of the secretary. Craig, do you want me to read that so people can, at home can hear it?
No, as long as, as long as everyone can see it. Is everyone able to see that document?
Yes.
Did anyone not see the document?
So I mean, obviously, the primary responsibility here for the secretary is to, is to keep the permanent record available to the public for all content of all school committees, including regular meeting, minute meeting, meeting minutes, excuse me, which are voted on, as we all know, intermittently at school committee meetings. So where Ashley and I have already been nominated and elected to positions, we're obviously, we can't be nominated. So this would be left to one of the remaining three members. If you feel like it's something that you can do. You know, I don't, I don't know that it's fair. I know I was reluctant to take any special roles on in my first sort of year. So Lydia, I don't know if you're, if you're willing to do that or not at this point. I wasn't. I sort of wanted to get the lay of the land before I started taking on additional responsibilities. So, and Paul, I think you were the secretary this past year. I guess, I guess I would, I guess I would nominate Ellen. If, if no one else has a nomination, I would nominate Ellen Mar to take, to fulfill, to fill the role as secretary. I don't know if there's a second to that.
Before, may I speak, Mr. Chairperson?
Of, of course.
Yeah, I'm going to decline the nomination. Paul might have had the secretary title, entitled only. I did all of, all of these responsibilities. I took care of not only for open session, but for executive session as well. I've been secretary multiple times in the past. It's not something that I feel I can do this year again.
Okay, say no more. Well, does anyone else have a nomination?
Sorry, can you hear that? Lydia, is this something that you'd be willing to take on? I'd like to nominate you for secretary.
Um, I guess so. I, I feel like I can do it.
Will, will help you a lot.
Yeah.
Lydia, I wasn't trying to dissuade you at all. I was, I was more so trying to, you know, avoid making you feel obligated to do it.
I appreciate it. I think I will be happy to, to step up if, if I am
Okay.
voted in.
Well, that's good to know. So Ashley, you have a nomination? Oh, Ashley's not there anymore. Well, moving along, I nominate Lydia St. Ange for, for the position of secretary of the school committee for the upcoming years. There's a second.
Second.
Paul will second.
Okay, so is there, can I have a roll call vote on this, please?
Aye, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Craig McClellan.
I, Lydia St. Ange.
Okay, that's unanimous. Congratulations, Lydia. You are the secretary. So we've fulfilled, or excuse me, we've filled all the special roles at this point. So I guess we move on to the next item on the agenda.
Actually, I can get that up there for you, Craig.
I believe that's your report.
Yeah, well, there's public comment we have on.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize. Yeah. So let's see if there's a, there seems to be a Q and A in the.
There is.
Let me just check this. Hold on one second.
In the meantime, Lydia, say hello and congratulations and welcome aboard. And we're excited that you're here.
Thank you so much.
Greg, would you like me to read the Q and A?
That'd be great, Dr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do. So it says, hello, my name is Hollis Hunnwell. I put out the petition that you may have seen a few weeks back, that calling for a more directed, the called for a more directed approach towards addressing the issue of racism in our schools. If you think it is appropriate, I alongside Teddy Craven would be happy to introduce ourselves to the committee during the meeting. Also, as far as singular questions, it was put to our attention by Suzanne Waters and Betsy Crumley that there was currently no late bus for MEPCO students, making it very difficult for them to engage in after-school activities and be a part of the CPS community. I remember that this was offered when I was a student, and I think this is an important thing that the school should most definitely bring back.
Okay, well, I'm not sure that, I don't know how we would, how would we have some sort of, if someone wanted, if they wanted to make a brief public comment, I don't even know how we would do that. Would you have to promote them to panelist or something like that, Dr. Sullivan?
Yes, I believe I'd have to, maybe Dr. Scollins could assist me on that, but we'd have to find them there and promote them up if they're under video. I don't know how else.
Okay, so I'm getting an update here that says that Mr. Hunnwell is, feels that the reading of the message was more than suitable for an introduction. So it seems as though that satisfied his objectives, which makes me feel that, you know, comfortable with, with, with moving on. I don't see any other questions on the queue. So I will mark that as, as answered. And we'll move on to the superintendent's report, which is the next item on the, on the agenda. Dr. Sullivan, turn it over to you.
Will do. Thank you, Craig. So first up on the superintendent's report, first of all, I'd like to, I'd like to re-welcome, they've been, they've visited us on, on previous school committee meetings. But as an official member of the class of public schools, I'd like to welcome Barbara Solanka, our new director of Student Services, and Susan Owen, who is our director of finance and operations. Susan's been on a lot of these calls. I feel like she's, she's already part of it. And Barbara has hit the ground running and has already introduced herself to the community. And we're really trying to figure out ways to, you know, to get Barbara out there so we can have some folks meet her. And of course, there's some challenges in the pandemic. And the same for Sue. And we'll, we'll get that, get that rolling. But I couldn't be more happy to have them here. And then on behalf of Cohasset Public Schools, I want to, for my role as superintendent, I want to thank and welcome Lydia St. Ange for being here. I know you have some wonderful kids in the district, and we look forward to your collaboration with this already amazing group. So thank you. Thank you very, very much. The first item on the agenda is an update on where we are with our school reentry process. So bear with me for a second. I'm just going to get a document up on the screen here. Okay, for one second. Okay, are you all able to see that?
I don't see anything yet.
Not yet? Okay. Yeah, it's the darnedest thing trying to share these things.
No problem. Just take your time.
Yeah. For whatever reason, say.
Green button at the bottom, Patrick?
Okay. That may do it. All right, let me try it again. Okay, this isn't exactly what I wanted to show you, but it gives you a sense for it. So we have been working quite diligently behind the scenes on our planning. Of course, there's a tremendous amount of work to do. The first thing that we did when we received the initial guidance is, of course, transparently sent that out to the whole community. So the community could get a set, get a sense for what the commissioner and his reentry team was asking the schools to do. And what they were asking us to do was a few things. One was to really look at three plans and to be ready to present three plans to the commissioner's team in August, which actually fits our timeline quite well. And they're asking us to look at what it would be like to have remote learning, what it would be like to have some type of hybrid, where we had students going to in-person with some social distancing restrictions at one point, and then that same group of students going to a remote learning situation at another point, so that we could minimize the amount of students in schools. And then the third model was everyone, or most everyone, coming back with some social distancing protocols in place. They've also asked us to do what he's calling a pressure test. And although the pressure test has not, we don't have a specific template for it yet, we may receive one this week, hopeful. Really, what he's looking for is to, for schools to look at two things. The three-foot distance, which of course, social distancing is now recommended by the World Health Organization. And then the six-foot distance, which is really what the CDC was, was banking on and holding on to. It's been very prominent in the news that the American, the Society for Pediatric Medicine has come out in favor of bringing kids back in a social distancing way. And they're basically advocating for what the WHO was saying. But we are keeping in mind that six feet would be ideal. But if we have, if we can at least create a three-foot distance with really good protocols, that would fulfill the pressure test that the commissioner is asking us to do. So right now, even before I get into this, we have all of our building principals working to look at their classrooms. And they're setting up classrooms in six-foot distance between the desks and then three-foot distance. What does that look like? And we're beginning to think about, you know, everything from ordering personal protection equipment, transportation information. It has not come out, which is very frustrating because it's hard to plan for these three plans without that. And really, a lot hinges on that. So that's not out yet. So we're doing our best. But we do have a fabulous, comprehensive planning team that is ready to roll this week. We are meeting as a steering team tomorrow. And we are preparing for our subcommittee meetings. Some of you who are on the subcommittee meetings, you've already received your Zoom information, and you'll be receiving your full agenda. Those initial meetings will be think tanks, and we'll be able to take those think tanks back to our operational groups and move in that fashion. But I want to go over just the full planning timeline right now, so everyone has a, has a sense for what we're doing and what we hope to do. We, I have already met with one of our subcommittees along with Dr. Scollins, our Family Connection and Communication Subcommittee, which is made of some amazing PSO liaisons who really have a good feeling for what's happening and with families and their individual schools. There's a liaison from each school. They've also, they helped us develop a survey that went out, and they're, they're helping us to analyze the survey. So we've been very transparent with that information. And we're meeting with them tomorrow as a steering team to really hear about families, where families stand on the information that's been given so far, what are their anxieties regarding coming back. And then we're going to talk about ways we can communicate to families to let them know what we're doing, ways we can work with families. For instance, do we want to do workshops as we increase and make our remote learning more robust? Do we want to do workshops to help families work with their children with remote learning? Workshops on how you can help students dealing with all the social emotional, social and emotional, really, trauma that has amounted from this situation, and then a multitude of other things. So we really want to hear from them. And then that will help inform our work as we go to the subcommittee meetings. But as you can look at the time planning here, in May, we had, we created our fall school reentry team and the structure. And we received our guidance regarding required safe supplies on June 5th, safety supplies, rather. On June 12th, the fall school reentry steering team and subcommittees and the Cohasset School Falls, Fall School Reentry planning timeline were communicated to staff and families. And then on June 25th, as I mentioned, the commissioner came out with his reentry group's initial reentry guidance. June 26th, we did, we issued the survey. So I actually think we did it on the 25th. We, we have to switch that. We did it on the same day, getting that information out. We kind of had it ready to roll because we knew that we needed that information. Thank you to the almost 900 respondents to that. So we really do have a good full amount. And that's not the last survey that will be coming out. Getting information about any plan that we have. If we get new guidance around transportation, for example, we're going to, we're going to survey the, the community to find out who might be able to drive their children, who would need to take a bus. You know, keep in mind, we are committed by law to provide bus transportation from kindergarten through grade six. And of course, we've offered more than that here in Cohasset. But we do want to make sure we get a sense for who might be able to drive, which we cut down on the amount of kids in the buses. And then we have to think about what drop off would look like if we have all those people driving too. So there might be more surveys around that. And then we really need to find out, you know, who, based on where we are, who is going to send their child and who really feels uncomfortable doing that. And we have to think about a plan that we might be able to put together for those students, make sure we educate those students whose families just don't feel comfortable sending them. I will give a little hint, and I will obviously give a major presentation that will show all that, that data from the surveys. But most families felt much more comfortable sending students to school than they did the other models. They, they weren't comfortable with remote learning. They wanted their kids back in school. And they felt that if we could, you know, show that we can provide a safe environment, which of course, we're going to strive to do, that they would be sending their kids back. But there's still, we have to think about everybody and what, where they're at, where they are in this very tough time. So the analysis of the survey data, it really took place the last couple of days. And then, as I mentioned, we have our steering team meeting tomorrow. And that, that's a, that should be in. And that, that's a, that should be an important meeting to kind of guide us. And while we're at that meeting, we're going to be creating templates for important considerations. These will become our frequently asked question documents regarding the many, many groups we have. We have several groups. We have an instructional team at each level. So at each school, we have a facilities overarching team. We have, well, I'll show you this in a second. We have quite a few teams. Moving on with the timeline, on the 10th, all the subcommittees will meet. On the 17th, we will complete those templates. So we'll really have a good sense of not only where we are in those major areas in this whole planning process, but what our operational plans will be for each school. And that's very important. And of course, these operational plans have to be in sync with each other because there's so many factors that if one school does, will, will impact another school. The 20th through the 24th, we will have our meetings or have already set some of them up with our associations, our unions, to make sure that everything that we have, we have them right involved with the planning process. So there should be no surprises. Bob Erlinson, who's the brand new director, I mean, sorry, president of the Class of Teachers Association, is right on the steering team with us. So we're really right there with them in the, in the weeds, trying to work through all this. So by the time we get to from the 20th to the 24th, and we're really bargaining and negotiating, I, I hope it's smooth sailing because we'll be really talking to each other throughout the process. On July 24th, we will have a draft ready to share with folks, whether we share it on the 24th or not. It will have some, something to do with where we are with our talks with the associations. But we will be able to ask questions, get information regarding this draft, which will be the next step. So from the 27th to the 31st, we'll be setting up virtual forums. How that, what that will look like will, is still to be determined. But I'm imagining we'd do something similar to this meeting where we'd have panelists and then we'd have people being able to ask questions. We certainly want to get input around every single operational plan and let the parents at that school give us input on that and how we can help their, their sons and daughters and help them. There's so many factors to consider. And that will be, I'm sorry, the 27th to the 31st is for the staff. And then on the 3rd and 4th, and we might extend it to another day, we're gonna have a couple of forums for parents. Parents at each level will have a forum for parents at each level, I should say. So we will have four forums, probably two per, per evening, the 3rd and the 4th, or during the, during a time when people can attend. August 5th is our school committee meeting. So at that time, we should have a fairly finalized draft. We, we feel we should have a finalized draft that will hopefully be able to be voted upon and considered by the school committee. And of course, if you want us to work on things after that, we still have a little bit of time to do so and to bring that back to you. And the goal is by the end of that week, the 10th, to publish it, to send it to the commissioner. That's when he wants it. He wants it right in that area in August. And then we have a lot of meetings around the implementation of the plan and what that's gonna look like. We have a retreat set for the next week with our leadership team. And we're gonna be doing a lot of work to make sure we can implement the plan that we put, we put in place. Clearly, because we don't know where we're gonna be in the fall, we're gonna have to be, in the words of the commissioner, nimble, moving between plans if indeed we have to. And clearly, we're going to have to continue to provide professional development for our teachers to be better at and to continue the improvement curve regarding remote learning. And we're just gonna have to have that ready to go and no matter, no matter what the situation is, because we don't know what's gonna happen with the, with the pandemic. So just so you know what I'm talking about when I said the reentry planning team. Here are our teams. And if I clicked on this, you could see the members of the team, but I'm not gonna do that right now because I've sent that out to you in the past. But we have our social emotional team, our student services team, which will work with students and how you, how we help students better than we have on individual education programs. 504 is our Yale students. The facility school operation, social distancing team actually has a lot of components to it. This includes transportation. It includes food services, how we're gonna help our, feed our, our students safely during the day. And it includes cleaning and our cleaning, our operations. And Sue Owen and I will be running that committee. It's, there's a lot there. Technology planning, that will be run by Dr. Scollins. And of course, student services will be run by, by Barbara Sawanka. And I'm gonna be running the social emotional team, just so everyone knows. That's, I'll be the facilitator rather. And then we have our, our instructional teams. You can see the Ausgood, the Deer Hill, the class at middle school and class at high school. We have an athletics team that, subcommittee that has not, will not be meeting on the 10th because that guidance is coming late July, mid to late July. So they're set to meet after that, although they have been working together and talking about some thoughts. And then very much in line with that, we have our before and after school, before and after school club and extracurricular activity team. And then I mentioned the family connection team. So it, it's a comprehensive group that all revolves around that steering team, that informs the steering team, and that eventually informs these teams, which will be operational teams at each building. So when you get the final plan, you're gonna get a couple of things. You're gonna get a reentry plan that's gonna have an executive summary of everything that's happening in the buildings that people can read in a very digestible, hopefully, version. And then we're gonna get into all of the pieces of it in a more expanded form. And then you're gonna get what's called a reentry planning workbook. And that workbook will walk you through all these templates or frequently asked questions. So, and this is a, you know, this is a dynamic process. So we're gonna try to get as many answers as we can with the information we have and with keeping safety paramount right there in front of us as the most important thing we do. And we're gonna listen and we're gonna be very transparent. And we're gonna work through it with our amazing faculty, our great parents. And we have students on these teams because student voice has been very important to us and it continues to be very important to us. And there'll be certainly, there'll be people who will be informing us as we go. So that's it for what I wanted to present about where we were. And I just wondered if you had any questions about where we are. I know it's a lot to digest.
Dr. Sullivan, could you just get the, the last, or maybe it was the penultimate slide back? I just wanted to take another look at that. I couldn't obviously scroll up and down. And I was trying to see, I know that you, you mentioned that August 5th will be the presentation of the, of the sort of reentry plan at the school committee meeting?
Yes.
And I want to just take another look at that page where that's listed, actually, the page above that.
Okay.
I just don't have it in front of me in a hard copy.
This one right here?
Go, keep on going up. Yeah, that, that, that slide there.
So did you have a question about that, Craig? So, so the idea is to have that, the plan finalized on the 5th. Now, if we have to make tweaks to it and we get information in the forums that doesn't allow us to have a completed product, we're gonna present what we have and let you know what we're still thinking about and then come back for final approval.
Sure. Now forgive me if you're not knowing this offhand, but when is the, when's the 2020, 2021 first day of school, like aside, the, the, the previously contemplated first day of school?
It's September 8th.
Okay.
Is the first day for students. I'm pretty confident with that. Maybe Dr. Scollins, you could check that just to be sure.
I just want to make sure that, you know, basically, I know that everyone is anxiously awaiting this, as I know you are as well. I mean, you know, it's a process that none of us anticipated and we're trying to figure out. And I think that a lot of the delay here, and I want to make it clear, that a lot of the delay was based on, frankly, every town municipality, you know, waiting on the much needed guidance from the state that has, has, has been, you know, sort of, in my opinion, a little slow to come. That's my personal opinion, not the opinion of the committee. So I, I just, I'm very sensitive to the fact that, as a parent myself, parents need to know this information. So I guess I'm asking the first day of school because I want to make sure that they have at least a calendar month here to plan for whatever happens. Because, you know, it's kind of, it, it could demand a, a fairly, some fairly major planning on part of the families, depending on what happens. I mean, I, I'm personally gonna be advocating that we go back to school. But I, so I'm just looking at, what I'm trying to do is review to see if there's any way we could maybe move it up. But I don't think we really need to. If the first day of school, Dr. Scollins, do you know what the first day of school is?
You're on mute.
I read her lips. September 8th, she said. Okay. So, so I guess, so I guess the forums on the 3rd and 4th will be good. That's, that's good. Then that's the first time where the families will be confronted with that, with sort of the, the idea of the concept of the plan, right? I mean, that you'll be, you'll be presenting a rough idea of what you, what you, so, so Dr. Sullivan, sort of like, I guess, I'm just trying to conceptualize what's happening here. And if you, I'm just gonna use the start schools later situation to, to draw an analogy here. I mean, I think that we sort of had two forums then. We had one after the fact when people seemed, you know, somewhat disgruntled about the, the proposed, you know, start time. And what you're trying to do here is basically involve all the families before any decisions are made. But you'll be presenting your rough concept of what, you know, the products, the fruits of all of our labors before that, that forum happens.
You know, and Craig, not to interrupt you, but we could move those up to the 27th to the 31st too, in that week. I, I've been back and forth on that.
Okay.
A little bit more time. It's just, I was just conscious of our leadership team and trying to do all those presentations to those, to those families. But, you know, we, we may, we may indeed move it up to that, those dates. Yeah, I mean.
I mean, if you feel that it's possible, I, I would like to do it earlier rather than later, if, if possible. But again, I don't want to, you know, make any, you know, I wouldn't want to see anyone make any, you know, uninformed decisions or try and rush things unnecessarily. If you think the additional time is necessary to put together as comprehensive, comprehensive a package and presentation for the families as possible on August 3rd and 4th, then please do that. I think that where we have a month, that's good. I just, I just know everyone is sort of very anxious about this.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I mean, I, I think, I think that we'd be ready to go on the 24th, which would give us, you know, the 27th to 31st to do the presentations. I mean, it is the 8th right now. So, you know, we do need some time. We just got the guidance on the 25th. You know, so it's, it's a, it's, it's a tight window to try to get the information ahead of time. Also, you know, what's really hard is that part of the reason the guidance hasn't come to us is because I think they're sort of waiting for where we're gonna be. I mean, it's, there's so many unknowns that whatever we present, and believe me, you know, our goal is safety, of course, primarily. But we want to get the kids back. We, we want to, we, you know, I know I speak for leadership team and we want, we want to have these kids back safely. And we want to, you know, we miss them. We, we want to be with them. We want to provide what we do best, which is, you know, helping the kids and working with the kids directly. So we're, we're aiming to do that. And if, if we're able to, we will. But we have to also create those other plans. One of which is, you know, dividing a kid so there's less kids in the building at a time, which would involve more remote learning on the, on the other side of it. And then we have to think about really continuing our growth with remote learning. Because we know from the last time this happened, when we weren't ready for it, nor was anybody, you know, from the public standpoint, that we, we will have to turn a dime and be ready to go. And it will be different than what it was in the pandemic when we really had to think about all these things. We'll have a lot of play, pieces in place. So it'll be a very different, to us, it feels very different because of our ability to prepare for it. So anyway, I, I just, I agree with you, Craig. I, I think, I think we can probably push it up to the 27th to the 31st. That gives a little time for me to make corrections too, before I present to you on the 5th. The 3rd and 4th is a little bit tight. So I'll, I'll talk to the steering team about that tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Other thoughts on this? I know it's a lot to digest, but you at least see where we are. It's very important that people know that we're doing this very thoroughly and that we're really trying to collect voice all the way through it. Remember, these teams are chock filled with parents and with, and get parents guardians, with students, with teachers, with community members. You know, we have folks from facilities. We have our emergency management. Len Pratt is on team. We have, you know, there, there are folks on these teams that represent the whole of Cohasset. So, and we can dip back into the teams at any point, more than just the think tank. They're gonna be there for us. And the principals, I know, will be gathering some of the folks in these other teams to be on their operational teams. And all the operational teams are really doing is taking, taking what we're, we're brainstorming in these groups and producing it into a building plan. Because there'll be subtle differences and sometimes big differences in the buildings. For example, the size of the classrooms, we're finding, even with the pressure tests, it's a little more challenging in the middle of the high school than it is at the elementary. Because it's, and then the size of our furniture. You know, one of the things we're finding in the pressure tests is that we're, we have to get rid of a lot of our excess furniture, which isn't a bad thing in, in many ways. But some of that furniture and a lot, most of it is, is really useful in that it's manipulatives for students who might have a, an individual education program that requires that. We'll have to keep that. But, you know, we, we were big on UDL furniture to try to allow for students to have alternative seedings that helped in social emotional ways. We're gonna have to, in, in some cases, break all that down and certainly clear them out because it's gonna be really tight to fit our 20 something students in a room and make sure that their three or six feet is gonna be even harder.
Dr. Sullivan, not to interrupt you, but I think that, you know, I think that you've given a good overview. I don't want to get too much in the weeds yet because we have so much planning to do on this.
Good.
So I think that you've given a good overview here and, and I, I like your idea of possibly moving that up. So I, I think that, you know, with that, we can probably move on too. Because I know you have other important things to talk about with the school district culture and climate update. So, so if we, if we can, if you feel comfortable moving on at this point, I, I prefer we do that.
I, I do, I do. Ashley, do you have a question?
I do. I just have two questions. One is, I know you mentioned that the new president of the CTA is involved in the committees and has been and will be. But I was wondering, I, I think in the last survey, you did one version for families and then another version for staff. Is that correct? Did I remember that correctly? Okay. So I was wondering if you have been able to continue to sort of take the temperature of the adults in the building about how they feel about coming back?
That's a big concern that we're working on tomorrow. We wanted the, I know the CTA has sent out a survey and they're sharing that information with us. But we, we also want to send out a survey in, in unison with them to find out how staff are feeling. So we already have ideas around that. And our goal is to get that out, Ashley, on Friday. And then, you know, we have, we have some idea from what the CTA sent out regarding how they're feeling that will help us in our, in our teams on Friday. As we go to create the plan, yeah, that's a, it's an important thing.
Thank you. And then the only other question I have is whether there've been any professional development hours done by staff on remote learning since we, I mean, I'm sure there has. But whether there's like some measurable, universal.
Yeah, they had some great conversations on those two days. And we, it was really some in-house professional development at the end of the school year, where they talked about what worked and what didn't and how they want to forge forward. And then I know Dr. Scollins and I have been working on providing, I'll let Dr. Scollins talk. We want to provide some optional work over the summer. And then some required work that we're gonna have them, we're gonna have to maybe negotiate to create, unless the commissioner comes forward and helps us with that. But we wanted them to have a little break too. We needed them to decompress. So I'll let Dr. Scollins talk if you want to say anything about that.
Yeah, no, it was a great question, Ashley. Like Dr. Sullivan said, that we've been talking about it. But we wanted to be able to offer something over the summer. So I'm talking with the vendor to see if they can offer us something. As you can imagine, they are very busy and have been booked out with other, from other districts. But certainly want to make sure that we give them options so that they can feel better in a, in a calmer setting than the school year as they were, oh, you know, just thrown into it. So our hope is to have that kind of organized. So those that can take advantage of it will over the summer. And then, like Dr. Sullivan said, our hope is something in the very beginning of the year. And, and that is tied into, we have a plan if, if the state does not kind of change up the schedule a little bit. We have another thought, how it could. We have another thought how it could work, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
But it's clearly going to have to be something that's ongoing and doesn't just, just stop. We have to have them ready to, ready to do that. I think you're on mute there, Chairman.
What I was saying is certainly it's going to be a big week for this. I mean, we're going to start, you know, really getting into the details of all of this and all the planning. But is there, are there any other questions from any other members of this, the school committee on this issue before we move on to the next issue and superintendent's report? Great, seeing none, Dr. Sullivan, can you move on to the next issue, please?
Sure, absolutely. So the next, the next update was on culture. And one major thing I wanted to make sure that the committee knew is that all of the, I believe all the leadership team has signed up for a conference on the 20th. It's called How to Be an Anti-Racist. And it is done by a gentleman named Ibram Kendi. And he's a renowned speaker on that subject matter. And Alisa brought that to our attention and we're excited to go to that, to continue our professional development and learning. And, you know, we are still in talks with Dr. Wernham, who's a fabulous resource to provide ongoing professional development for our, our leaders, first of all. And then secondly, we're looking to hopefully get her to speak towards the beginning of the year too, even before we do that major October grouping. One of the things that I need to attend to, it's just been hard to get to, is I do want to create some forums this summer where we have some discussions regarding the schools, where we are, where we need to go, how we can continue to improve. And what we need to attend to is we forge into our strategic plan. Our strategic plan, we're moving into that. We actually met with our, and I will be able to update on what that is and what the actual process of that is at a future meeting. Hopefully a fairly soon future meeting. But that is, that is obviously the cultural competency in our work around that is going to be a dominant piece of that. Or at least a major piece of it as we go forward. And, you know, I just want to make sure that everyone who's out there knows that this is a new team and these, these issues are paramount to us. And as we presented at our last meeting, not only are we approaching this as something that's important for us to do because it increases the development of the students and in our society, but we, all of us, believe in social justice and really have this in our core. So I just would reach out to anybody out there who has felt disenfranchised or who has not felt that they have had a voice and would like to, you know, be part of those forums when I do announce them, to be a part of it. And also to come forward to me or to any of our leaders to discuss anything that we might be able to learn from and grow from and, and make sure that things are better as we move forward. And so I just, I just wanted to say that so that everybody knew that, that that's where we're coming from. So, Ashley, do you have a question?
All right, I just wanted to say that it was brought to my attention by a parent in the district who saw the Instagram account that some, I guess, former students have been populating. She saw that BC High is putting together a board. And their intention with doing this is to put together a group that would be able to work in collaboration with a third-party reviewer. I mean, granted, this is a different budgetary situation that we're dealing with here. But anyway, I think the, the bones of this are good. And I think they're working with this third-party reviewer to do sort of confidential intake of anyone who's willing and able to come forward to share any experiences that they feel like are beneficial for the community to know about. And then they sort of collaborate and come, anyway, I'll send you the information that I found, that this parent forwarded to me. Because I think it's really valuable. Because I think not only does it create a forum for people, students, who feel like they have something they would like to share. But it also creates a mechanism to sort of allow faculty to have like, to just know that things are being handled in a way that is appropriate and discretionary and also productive and with the intention of moving forward. So I think it, so, and it comes from Craig's alma mater, so it must be great. But I'll send you that information so that you can take a look at it and see if it's worth exploring further.
Oh, I think it sounds good. So the other thing is just to keep in mind that we have, we have the bones of that as well. Because remember, we do, one of the, one of the points of creating the Safe Schools Committee was that in times when there is, there are things that, there are two parts of it. There's the proactive part where we should have goals every year that we're working on. And then there's the part where if something rises and we need to attend to it more deeply, we can work with that. And we do have a committee that's called the Inclusive Cultures Committee on that. And it's filled with parents and it has students on it to increase that committee and to do, to align with a lot of the goals that you just recommended. And also to work with someone who might guide us is a great idea. I would add, Ashley, and for the rest of the committee and anyone who's listening, if you recall that Principal Scott has engaged the whole school for the last two years in an inclusive culture survey that's done by an independent party. And we're, we're going to be presenting that data to you, which will show the growth, hopefully, that's happened in the year to come. And it paints a really good, I think, accurate picture of where we want to move. I know that the Inclusive Culture Survey that was put out two years ago very much shaped the direction of Principal Scott's school improvement plan this year. So I'm very anxious to see that data. I know it's almost here and to present it to this team as a show of what we're doing well and where we need to grow. And we want to continue that. And I should say that the ability to provide that survey has been provided to us by CEF. So thank you, CEF. That's a good example of a community organization really giving back to a school that's trying to make a difference in a very important area. So that is, that's a piece to this too. And in terms of the Instagram accounts, what, you know, I, one of the things about it from my view is that I wish I knew who these people were. And I just, I understand it and I, you know, I value the role that anonymity has and anything in our society, people shouldn't feel they're going to be judged and should be able to give information. But from my point of view, I want to have those conversations and have those open conversations and have those people trust us enough. And I know trust is earned and very easily lost and you got to work to earn it. But I just want to say, I'm hoping that we get to the point where people can come forward and have those open conversations. And that we'll, we'll appreciate that and accept what they're saying so that we can help and investigate a situation too, or if it happened and make us, make us better as we move forward. So that's what I would say about anything that's anonymous and out there as anonymous is that, you know, please come forward and join in the conversation. And please tell, if I can help you, please come forward and talk to me. So I just think to put that out there too.
Thank you. I just want to also say, because I don't know where else it would be appropriate to say this. I feel like Hollis asked a specific question about the late bus and we didn't actually answer it.
So Chairman McClellan, would you like me to answer that question? Because it was a, usually we don't answer questions regarding things, public comment, but, but from a protocol standpoint, but I'd be glad to talk about that. I just want to make sure I'm in protocol.
Well, I'm sort of always in favor of trying to address issues that are raised if we can. It's, this issue is, you know, it's on the agenda, it falls within this agenda item. And, you know, we want to encourage participation here, not disincentivize it, so please.
Yes, okay. So we have, we're shifting our bus situation with Situate. Where now, that's the idea is to partner with Situate, not Hingham. There were some difficulties in the shared bus situation that made it more difficult to provide an after-school bus for AMECO folks, our Boston students. And remember, when I talked about the changes that were going to come and I talked about transportation and I said, not all this is tough, not all this is bad. That was one of the things I thought would be good is that we could control, work with a like community that might allow us to have some more flexibility in that regard. And that is the plan going forward. And I will say that as we look at our planning going forward with the reentry, it could be a situation where we have to look at the financial possibility of leasing our own bus. And if our, if monies that are coming our way will allow us to do that. And that, of course, would give us even more flexibility with that. But it is hard to get a late bus because it's simply a financial matter of having a second bus. But the Situate, the partnership with Situate gives us a little more flexibility because of the, the individual buses for a certain levels and then the team buses for the elementary level. So move, move forward, Craig?
Please.
Okay, so.
Thank you for answering the question.
You're very welcome. All right, so additionally, what else? That was, that was really all I wanted to update on that, if there's no further questions. Ellen, you, forgive me for this, but you had said something you wanted me to update on in the, when I presented the, and it's escaping me. Anything you remember, you and I talked about it? I'm sorry. It's okay, it'll come back to me. But I can't, I can't think of it right at the moment. So I just want to check on the agenda for a second.
Was it gifts?
No, the gifts will come up later because that would have to be under items not previously considered. So next on the agenda is the faculty hiring update. Okay, so that's a little small. Get a little bigger for you guys. Can you see that?
We could see it, but it just went away. Here it is back on.
You see it now?
Yep.
Okay, shrink it a little bit, it's huge. There we go. Okay, so here's our hiring update. I continue to be really happy and very impressed with the quality of educators that are coming my way as new hires. I think we hit the jackpot in our central office hires and I think we were hitting the jackpot with these hires. So it's just a testament to the fact that we're getting really great candidates. We are in a nice position. Some of the candidates that I believe that we hired since our last one that weren't on here previously, I believe we had mentioned Allison Pierce, who is going to be filling in for Kate Nelligan. Kate Nelligan is obviously our middle school counselor. Allison's a wonderful hire, comes with a good deal of experience. And Kate and Allison will work together in concert for about a month or a little less than that before Kate moves into her retirement. We hired a middle school special education teacher. It, what was amazing is when I heard her, I saw her name Stephanie Fagan, I'm like, what do I know Stephanie Fagan? Stephanie was in my homeroom when I was a teacher in Marshfield for four years. So throughout her whole high school career, so I got to know her very well. She's an amazing person and I didn't even know she had applied for the job and she got the job. So I was very proud to see that. I didn't even get a chance to put a good word in for her because she was hired. So, but she is, she is great and will do a fabulous job in that regard. I think I mentioned Allison Thornton had been hired, our high school science teacher. We have Stephanie Kennedy as the kindergarten teacher. Susan Harms, Lee Harms she goes by, is our grade one teacher. We had a Gail Saltau is going to be our high school secretary. So she was .5.5 at the middle school and the high school. She moved over, so now she is at the high school. And then just recently, is it on here? We were able to hire a middle school secretary, which isn't on here. And her name is escaping me, but that will be on my next update. We have hired one and she, she was also an excellent candidate. So you can see, we still have some ESPs to hire. We do have a high school guidance situation. I should mention that Laura Stuzieri went to a .5, which allowed us to hire a lead and not increase our FTEs in that regard. And then we do have the middle school, high school adjustment counselor that we have posted. And we're looking into the possibility of shifting that position a bit. But again, not impacting the FTEs and actually potentially having it be half, half psych and half counselor. But there's a, that's a possibility and I will inform the committee as we move, move to that. That would just be to create a model so that instead of having a shared adjustment counselor, you had a .5 psych, a .5 adjustment counselor at each building. But there's some work to be done for that to happen. It's not a definite yet, but it's a possibility. But right now, we do have that open position still out there and not filled yet. And we have a .5 custodian that, at the middle school and the high school, that I believe we are close to filling. So these are moving very, very well. You see also, I should mention, I didn't, that Julia Drumolin, who was hired for Trish Baldwin, her retirement, as our special education teacher. She comes with a great deal of experience from a couple of towns in, in the area. She's a wonderful hire, will hit the ground running and I think will be a leader in that department and that building. So it's looking very positive for us in terms of our hires. Any questions from the committee? Okay, thank you for your continued support with that. It's been great.
Okay, I think that completes your report. Dr. Sullivan, is that correct?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Right, thank you very much. So moving on to the next agenda item is school committee comments and communication. First on that is subcommittee and liaison definitions and assignments, we'll sort of merge those two. There are, from my understanding and memory, there's five current subcommittees in the school committee. There is, as of last year, 17 liaison positions. There may have been other outside groups that have, that have sprouted since that time. And I imagine the vice chairperson will be well aware of that fact if there were. And I invite you to please let us know if you think there are any outside groups that we should, could use representation on for updating purposes. Subcommittees are obviously committees of the actual school committee where, you know, affirmative planning and decisions are made and then brought to the committee for vote. Liaisons, assignments are just, are just that. They are school committee members that serve as liaisons to outside groups in order to update the whole school committee on the goings on of outside groups, all of these important, you know, integral parts of our community. So I don't know that we need to, you know, I'm not inclined to read description of each unless it's something that people would prefer to do. We had distributed this, this material ahead of the meeting. You know, I think we're all able and capable of reading them. I believe, you know, the only, I guess, the member that I would, that would be most concerned about is Lydia, who is new. But hopefully, Lydia, did you have a chance to review the materials in advance of the meeting about the various subcommittees?
Yes, I did review them and read the descriptions. And I actually feel like a lot of the places that Jennifer was involved kind of aligned, also being an educator, aligned with my areas of interest and knowledge. So it might be an easy fit to, to kind of fill in some of those places.
Well, that would certainly be the easiest thing to do, I suppose. But, you know, obviously I don't want to, you know, lock anyone into any decisions that were made last year. If people want to switch around, that's fine. Mrs. Mar, you may want to, you know, switch the committees that you are on. Mrs. Mar, you may want to, you know, switch the committees that you are on, the subcommittees or the liaisons. I'm open to whatever folks want to do. So I guess what we'll do is just go through them one by one to, you know, accept any sort of volunteer roles in those committees. And we'll start with the subcommittees themselves. The policy and standards last year was comprised of Mrs. Madden and Mrs. Kaleri. I don't know, Mrs. Kaleri, you want to, do you want to serve on that again? Did you enjoy your time on that? Do you want to do it again?
Yeah.
Okay. Obviously, Mrs. Madden is no longer on the committee, and as Miss St. Orange was just saying, she seems like she'd be comfortable with that. Do you want to serve on that committee in Mrs. Madden's stead?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So that's simple. There we go. That's who will be on that for this coming year. Moving on to superintendent evaluation. I would like to stay on this committee, but I am willing to cede my position on it if someone else would like to be involved. Mr. Kearney, do you want to be involved in this again, this superintendent evaluation? Mrs. Mar, are you raising your pen? Do you have a point to make?
Yes, but you can proceed with, you were asking Mr. Kearney a question.
Well, no, I mean, if it's relevant, please share because I'm obviously new to the role. So, you know, I could use the input.
So I appreciate going through them one by one, but I just wanted to point out on collective bargaining because this might, this might change people's minds about certain things. This will be ramping up, you know, this year, and in all likelihood, it will, could continue into the following school year. And as such, I don't know if it would be appropriate for me to serve on that committee, that subcommittee, knowing that I'll be leaving in May and knowing that we might not be in agreement at that point in time and past history, although there's all new people. But sometimes it's important to note that in the past, it has not, it has not been received well when the school committee, subcommittee changes in the midst of negotiations because a member, a member departs, you know, their term is up. So that's going to be a very important one here, and I kind of wanted to get that out there now before everything else, everyone else considers their, the other roles.
And that was actually the update, Craig. Now that I remember it, it was that a part of our reentry timeline, the 20th through the 24th, does involve some of those negotiations, which you may or may not want to be a part of. You know, there were a couple of them throughout the year that you allowed me to work it through. But this would be this committee that would be working out with them.
Okay. Well, I'll likely participate in that, but having just been sort of unceremoniously elevated in my overall role here, I don't know that I'm going to be taking on the actual position. So, but let's just stick first with, I appreciate that information, Mrs. Mar. Thank you for raising that. I think that's a critical point that everyone needs to be knowledgeable about. But before we move on, I just want to address superintendent evaluation committee. Mr. Kearney, do you want to stay doing that with me, or would you like to switch off that committee?
It would be my pleasure to serve with you, Craig.
All right. Now, let me ask this. Mrs. Kaleri or Mrs. St. Orange, is either of you, would you feel strongly about participating in that? Because like I said, I would, I'd be willing to step off of it if someone else wanted to take a shot at it, but I'm also happy to stay on.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Great job. That's my invitation.
All right. Moving on, collective bargaining. Mrs. Mar just spoke about this. We know that she does not want to be on this, so there's going to be at least one opening. I think Mrs. Kaleri does want to stay on this committee from comments last year. So I don't know, and like I said, I'll participate. I don't want to make the commitment. It is going to be a lot of work this year. I am going to participate, but I don't want to be the permanent member. Is there, is there anyone else, Mr. Kearney or Miss St. Orange? You guys want to be, either of you want to be on the committee, the subcommittee, permanent
I guess, yeah, I mean, I would step up if that's the case. It'd be my pleasure to serve.
I mean, it's going to take a lot of work. It's an important, this is a very important, this is a critical role, I think. So, you know, do you think, you feel comfortable taking on the commitment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to note that, you know, even if I'm not serving on the collective bargaining subcommittee and meeting with the bargaining units, I will always be available, and if the meetings are posted as a whole, I'm happy to participate in that respect and help because I think I'm the only one on the committee who's been through the process.
Well, thank you for that. I take a similar position. All right. Moving on, finance and facilities. Mrs. Mar, is this something you want to continue to do?
Sure.
Mr. Kearney, I know, I don't even have to ask you, I know that you want to stay on this committee.
Well, you know, I just, I do have some questions about this committee. One of the things, I think it's the most important committee. I mean, I think a lot of them are absolutely important. The reason why I bring this up is because finance and facilities, I mean, that's basically the budgets, and it's something that I think honestly, we should probably do as a whole because there's so many decisions to be made that I felt like there was only four people looking at a $21 million budget, and I just felt like it was way too overwhelming, especially with the fact that we're going to have some situations coming up now with some major decisions with the budget. So I would ask that maybe we could do that as a whole committee. I don't know if that's possible, but I just think it's so crucial to look at that committee and to have your input and Ashley's input in the last couple of meetings was so crucial to get us past that.
I really appreciate that, Mr. Kearney, but I think obviously, the purpose of subcommittees is to do some of the background work and then bring it to the full committee. So we're still all involved in the process. And if you post the meetings of the whole, then we can all participate, and it doesn't necessarily mandate or necessitate that all of us are there every single time. So I think that may be, I think, I don't want to expand the subcommittee. I mean, the whole purpose of subcommittee is just that. So I take your comments. I do. I understand where you're coming from.
I would just say that I would like to, in those meetings, I would just like to make sure that other members are participating or know exactly what we're talking about in those meetings. Because again, there's so many situations that are so important that I think maybe if it's, you know, we CC everybody after every meeting, or again, it's one of the most important subcommittees. I'd be honored to serve on it again, and it'd be my pleasure to do that. With that said, I just would understand that, I just want to throw that out there, that it's just so important, this committee, as they all are.
I think the point is well taken. So I think what will leave that subcommittee intact, and we'll move on to security. I am, I, I am willing to stay on this committee. Mrs. Mar, is this something you want to continue to do, or do you want to relinquish your role and have someone else fill that spot?
I'm happy to continue if no one else has a dying urgent desire to do so.
Does anyone else wish to be on the security committee instead of either myself or Mrs. Okay. So we'll leave that intact as well. So the only changes I have for subcommittees are, Miss St. Orange is going to be joining the policy and standards subcommittee in Mrs. Madden's place, and Mr. Kearney will be taking on Mrs. Mar's role in the collective bargaining subcommittee. Moving on to representative and liaison assignments, I'm not inclined to go through these one by one. I think that if there are any, I mean, obviously, there's certain roles we have to fill, so I'm just going to go through those one by one. Dear Hill School Council, is anyone interested in taking that position?
I'd be interested in that.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. All right. I will put you down?
Luckily, I have a Dear Hiller now.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Congrats. And then moving on to the special ed pack, I know this was something that was near and dear to Mrs. Madden's heart. I know that, Mrs. St. Orange, at the outset of this discussion, you said that you had a lot of similar interests. Is this sort of qualifies as one of those where you'd want to get on this, act as liaison to this outside group?
I can. I don't know if, I mean, if anyone else wants to dive in there.
You don't need to. You don't need to. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. It was just based on your comment at the outset of the discussion. Anyone else want to be, want to join Mr. Kearney in the special ed pack?
I would, Mr. Chairman, but I believe that they meet during my working hours.
Okay. So that's not possible. Anyone else, or? All right. So, Mrs. St. Orange, would you mind if I put you in here?
Actually, wait. Am I muted? I'm just curious, I guess, meeting times are something that I need to consider? Is that?
I would be, if it's okay, I'd be willing to take those morning meetings because I, you know, I do my, I own my own business, so I could make those meetings. And then what I could do is pretty much CC you, Lydia, and, you know, I'd love to work together on that committee with you.
Well, yes. So that's a good point, Paul, excuse me, Mr. Kearney. I think that's a good point. You know, that's why we have more than one on the committee. I mean, it's not necessary for both members to be there at the same time. And in fact, while it's ideal that there's representation at every single meeting, and that's the intent, obviously, that's not always going to be possible either. This is a liaison assignment, so it's really representative capacity in order to update us. So, you know, it's not going to be earth, you know, shattering if, you know, one meeting is missed here and there.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I also work in school. I'm a teacher, so morning commitments are, I'm with my students.
Yeah, of course. So.
So if we can do that as a, as a Paul is there and I'm CC'd and I can be informed that way, I'm happy to help in that way, if that's acceptable.
It's more than acceptable. It's fine. I mean, if, basically, if there's any willingness to act in any sort of, you know, updating role, I don't think you need to play, you know, instrumental or integral part of the outside group, if you're comfortable with doing that. I just, I'm not going to be, you know, too willing to take on too, too many more responsibilities, taking on the responsibility of the chair. I know it's an incredible amount of work. So that's why I'm looking for some, basically, some support from the group to do that.
You got it.
You know, Mr. Kearney, that's fine. We can just leave him, too. I don't think it needs to be two people, frankly.
What chair? What group?
I mean, like I said, I mean, I'd love to work with you, Lydia. I could definitely keep you updated. I think that this, this is one of my pledges to serve on. So I would definitely be able to attend the meetings and I would inform you if that's okay.
I mean, Mr. Kearney, if you're able to attend the meetings and you're able to, and you're able to commit to that, because it is an important liaison assignment, if you're able to commit to that, then I'm not so concerned about having two people assigned to it, frankly. All right. So moving on, CEF, this is obviously an important group. Does anyone have any interest in serving, in acting as our liaison to CEF?
Is it, just to, I guess, to clarify, are they meeting, when are they typically meeting? Just so that I know if I could commit or not.
I don't know. Does anyone, Mrs. Mar, are you aware of that?
I think they, I think they might meet monthly, and I think, and this is just my opinion, it wouldn't be a situation where you had to go to their meetings. You could just establish a relationship with one of the directors of the CEF and touch base from time to time, get in the loop on when their grant cycle is, are they getting enough applications? I don't think it's something, a liaison position where you necessarily have to go to their board meetings.
Okay.
Craig, that said, it would be my pleasure to serve on that because that's such a great organization, and the members are really well organized, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't really be a burden. So it'd be my pleasure to take that role on.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Kearney. I appreciate that. AEC, I think this is sort of similar to what Mrs. Mar just described. I mean, I think that, you know, I don't know that every meeting is necessary, but is anyone interested in this?
I'd be happy to do that. The alternative, alternative energy, right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
They meet Monday nights once or twice a month, and it's going to be very important going forward considering that we just voted at town meeting, you know, to allow the schools to lease the school roofs and/or real estate for solar panels. So it will be an important, I can tag-team that with you, Lydia, if you want.
That would be great.
If you can't get to a meeting, I'm happy to rotate with you on that.
And don't forget, it'll be increasingly important, not only because of what was voted on at the town meeting, but also because of, you know, what we have coming up and later on in the agenda here, and where we're going to be contemplating, you know, new facilities in the future. And I'm sure there'll be alternative energy considerations, that's part of it, that's integrated into the charge. So thank you for that. Moving on, diversity committee. This was, this was Mrs. Madden's last post here that we need to sort of fill. Again, it's a liaison committee. I don't think you're having to, you know, go to every single meeting. Is this something, I know this is something near and dear to your heart, Mrs. Kaleri, are you willing to get on this?
Put my name there. That's fine. I usually did the updates for.
You do?
I was at the meetings, and it was just easy enough for me to do the updates at school committee, too. So that's fine.
You do indeed. Okay. So I think, hopefully, was everyone able to take a look at this document that sort of lists last year's assignments prior to the meeting? Was everyone able to do that? Okay. So is everyone satisfied? Excuse me. Yes, Mrs. Mar?
I just wanted to comment on the warrant review. I'm happy to stay and do that if we ever get back to live meetings. But we did vote and amend our policy on warrant review to have the chair be the signator of the warrant during this period we're in. So I just, I don't know if we need to change that. I just wanted to call that out, that Craig, you would now be getting the warrant electronically for your electronic signature on Tuesdays to be turned into the town hall by Wednesday.
Yep. So I had anticipated that, and I'm happy to do it. But I'm also certainly willing to relinquish that obligation to, if you enjoy doing it or it's something you want to do, then I don't need to do it, but I'm happy to do it. It's a fairly simple thing. I'll review the warrant every, 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 every period and then sign it. It's not, I mean, I know that it gets electronically sent. It's an e-SIG, it's a DocuSign type situation, correct?
Yes. Yeah.
I'm happy to do it. That way, we don't have to amend a prior vote or anything like that.
Well, no, the vote was for the position of the chair. So it was for the position of the person. So.
Right. That's what I'm saying. If we change it to you, then we're going to have to vote on a change. Otherwise, we just leave it as is.
Oh, yeah, no, I wasn't advocating to change it to me. I'm saying, I'm happy to go in and look at the bills. So the position has actually morphed from, because of the situation that we're in. The warrant review used to just be a committee member who would go in and actually review everything before the meeting and to make sure everything was in good order, whether they were the chair or not the chair. But now, now it is different, and I think it should be the chair at this point. Doesn't preclude any member from going in and looking at the, looking at the warrant or looking at the bills.
Okay. Thank you. I'm putting my name in there. Okay. So any other issues with anything as it stood, aside from the additions that we just made, which is putting Miss St. Orange in the Dear Hill Council? Paul is alone now on the special ed pack as a liaison. Mr. Kearney is also the CEF liaison. Miss St. Orange and Mrs. Mar are the AEC liaisons jointly. Mrs. Kaleri is now the diversity committee liaison, which frankly, you were already, and I will be the warrant review representative. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes. I'd just like to make a note. What happened to elderly affairs? Oh, there we go.
It's on there. We just didn't address it because it's from the same thing as last year that I was just asking if everyone's comfortable with.
Yeah, no, that's great. I definitely want to stay on that.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right. So unless there's any other issues, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Great. The next agenda item is the school facilities committee charge. This document, which was provided in advance of the meeting, was voted on, adopted and approved by unanimous vote by the co-asset board of selectmen on June 23, 2020. It's basically just sort of revitalizing an existing bylaw, but we just needed to draft the actual charge. I essentially drafted this document, but it's been adopted by board of selectmen. We now. I essentially drafted this document, but it's been adopted by Board of Selectmen. We now need to adopt this. So has everyone had a chance to review this document in advance of today's meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anyone have any question as to what it is or what it's, what the purpose is? All right, well, I'll just, just quickly, for, I don't know if there are any participants left out there. Let me see. There are two attendees, so just quickly to explain, this is, this document will sort of govern the direction that the School Facilities Committee will be taking. This School Facilities Committee actually hasn't been constituted since the 70s. We're reconstituting it this time to evaluate and explore the need for any additions, renovations or construction of new school facilities here in the town of Cohasset. And this, this, this is basically a sort of, it's sort of a a mission statement of sorts. So if everyone's reviewed this, are there any motions for a vote on this charge this time?
I'd like to make a motion.
Great. Motion made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded made by Mrs. Coleri. I'd ask for a roll call vote on this, please.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Lydia Saint Ange.
Hi, Craig McClellan. Great, that, that document's unanimously approved by the school committee, and this is very exciting. I'm very excited to get this moving. So at this point, I think the next step is to constitute the committee. And three of those committee members come from, I think there's nine committee members, three of them come from the school committee, three of them from the town moderator, and three of them from the Board of Selectmen. So I think the next step is probably to form that committee, which I think will be, it will accept applications for that. But, but as far as this particular agenda item, I just wanted to, we just needed to vote on the, that's a particular charge. So moving on to the next agenda item, negotiated rates for special education transportation providers. We need to vote on this. Is this a document we can get up somehow on the screen?
I'm not sure. I know this is what was voted on at town meeting. It was just brought up. I don't know, yes, it is. I'm sorry, it's there. You got it up there or no?
Yes.
Maybe a little larger for you.
All right, is there any discussion from the committee or questions or comments, anything of any sort regarding this, this agenda item? And Dr. Sullivan, maybe you can just explain what it is everyone's looking at?
So these are our negotiated rates with our out-of-district providers. Remember, we said that we were going to be having, there were, it was really, Michael McMillan was working to negotiate some of the rates, and these are the rates that we, we landed on for our, you can see the, for each of the first student, the, obviously, that's our MECO program transportation. You can see the normal rate and what we invoiced after the reduction. You can see JJB Livery, who does some out-of-district special education transportation. You can see the, the rate that was negotiated. Dunham Transportation, SCO, North River Collaborative, and then, of course, Hingham Public Schools, which was an agreement that we came to regarding how much we pay them for their use of their MECO busing. So I don't know, Ellen, if you want to fill in any details regarding that, but it's just, these are just, these were the negotiated reductions that I know, I was on vacation. I wasn't able to make the selectman meeting, but Michael did, was present at that, and I know this was voted through in that regard.
Right, and I attended that meeting as well. So state, state guidance was to pay our service providers during the COVID-19 pandemic, even if services were not rendered, and that's in violation of some mass general law, and I don't, I don't remember the statute. Don Piot, who's the town finance director, indicated that payment for services rendered could be made based on a vote, a vote of the Board of Selectmen, a vote of the school committee, and his agreement. So he, he agreed, the Board, as Dr. Sullivan indicated, the Board of Selectmen voted five to zero, and now this is before us to vote to make it official. The guidance by each, Mr. McMillan worked with each of these service providers to come up with a discounted rate based on several metrics, and this is not uncommon in terms of what other districts have been doing as well. I don't, I don't know if the percentages were identical district by district, but he did talk to a lot of districts and they, they kind of came to some, some forms of consensus for some of these service providers.
Yeah, they did. It was very consistent with what they were doing.
Thank you very much for that, for that additional information, Dr. Sullivan, Mrs. Marr. Anyone have any comments or points of discussion on this matter before we take a vote? Great. Are there any motions on the floor at this time for a vote on this document? On the, on the, let me just get the official name, negotiated rates for special education transportation providers?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded made by Mrs. Marr. I don't think this is probably something we need a roll call vote for. Mrs. Marr, would this be something we need a roll call?
Yes, we're in a, in a virtual forum. Every vote, every vote needs to be a roll call vote.
That's right. I neglected to remember that. Thank you. All right, so roll call vote, please.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Lydia Saint Ange.
Hi, Craig McClellan. That's a unanimous vote. That's, that document's approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next agenda item, reports from subcommittees and liaison positions. I have no report. Does anyone have anything to report from any of the liaisons they represent?
Well, I actually have a comment, and Susan, I want to welcome you aboard. This is your actual first meet. I know you've been in other meetings, and I'd like to welcome you. I do have a question about as far as the return of the kindergarten money, athletics money, and the school bus money. Was that all returned to the parents because we got it voted on, correct?
Yeah, that, that was, do you want to go with that, Sue?
Well.
We did, we did refund the money. I think the last warrant was probably like a week or two ago. There may be some athletics that we still have to refund, but I know they did the kindergarten and the, and the transportation. Because Michael, Michael got that all done, just about going out the door.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Kearney?
Yes, thank you.
All right, that would be sort of following, I think, the follow-up and update section. Right now, I'm just asking if anyone have any reports of subcommittees or liaison positions? Anyone? No one? Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. I think there are three separate sets of minutes that we need to approve. If I'm mistaken, please correct me. We have a set of minutes, well, there's two sets of minutes from, from May 20, because we had sort of two separate meetings there. We'll do the, the first one is the school choice meeting, and that took place on May 20. Has everyone had the opportunity, has everyone, did everyone find the meeting minutes in there? Obviously, Mrs. Saint Ange, you will not be voting on any of these. You didn't attend them. But, so you can abstain from voting, but did everyone that was at the meetings have a chance to review them? Yes? Okay, so is there a motion on the floor for approval of the minutes for, well, I should ask this first. Is there any discussion for the, for the content of the minutes for the 5/20 school choice meeting? Seeing none, is there a motion for, for the approval of the minutes for the May 20, 2020 school choice meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Point of order, he wasn't in, I don't think he was in attendance, so he can't.
Was he not attend, were you not in attendance? All right, so is there a motion made perhaps by Mrs. Coleri? Is there a motion to approve the, the minutes of the May 20, 2020 meeting for school choice?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Coleri. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Marr. Thank you. All in favor, roll call, please.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Abstain, Craig McClellan.
Abstain, Paul Kearney.
Abstain, Lydia Saint Ange.
So I think we're, I mean, was, I think Jen, was she in attendance? Excuse me, Mrs. Madden was in attendance at that meeting? I'm just getting the, I'm just getting them up in my.
Yes, she was.
Okay, so I mean, I don't know how we can treat that. I mean, it's a, how do we do that where she's no longer a, a member, but she was the only remaining member that formed the quorum at that meeting?
It's a good question. I'll have to look into that. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, why don't we, I think what would be sensible is we can, we'll somehow get her, her vote as it's something that was, that happened when she was still a member. It's the only way to get a unanimous vote, or we're going to have to waive the requirement of a three or five vote for that, majority vote for that. It's one of the two. Otherwise, it just remains in limbo. So I guess what we'll do is we'll, we'll table this and we'll put it back on the agenda for next meeting. And in the meantime, I will ascertain what needs to be done there, okay? Is everyone, is everyone comfortable with that, Roach?
Yep.
Great. Let's move on to the May 20, 2020 regular school committee meeting, which I believe all of us were present for. Does anyone have any discussion or comments or inquiries about those minutes, the content of those minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor for the approval of the school committee minutes for the meeting of May 20, 2020?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Marr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Coleri. Vote, excuse me, all in favor, roll call, please.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Abstain, Lydia Saint Ange.
Hi, Craig McClellan. I believe we've lost Mr. Kearney, so that's enough. For a majority, those minutes are approved. Moving on, the next and la, and final set of meetings that we need to approve are the June 3, 2020 regular school committee meeting, meeting minutes. I don't have that, let me just see who was there.
All of us are all there.
All of us were there. Perfect. Is there any discussion surrounding the content of those minutes at all? Great. Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor for the approval of the June 3, 2020 school committee meetings, meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Marr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded made by Mrs. Coleri. All in favor, roll call, please.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Craig McClellan.
Abstain, Lydia Saint Ange.
Thank you very much. That is approved by way of majority vote. So I think that completes the minutes, if I'm correct. Is that correct? There were only three, right?
Correct.
All right, moving on to follow-up and updates. I think, Mr. Kearney, before we lost him, it asked a follow-up and update question, and I think Mrs. Owen and Dr. Sullivan and Mrs. Marr were kind enough to provide that. So that was excellent. Is there any other, are there any points of follow-up, following up or any updates that anyone wants to share? Mrs. Marr, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, just one comment for you, Mr. McClellan. On Monday, as you know, during COVID-19, Dr. Sullivan and I have been participating with other town manager, town management and leaders in the, on these COVID-19 updates with the police chief, the fire chief, the town manager, emergency management, the town health agent, the chair of the Board of Selectmen, which will now be Diane Kennedy, and now it will be yourself, Craig. There are Zoom meetings, 1 o'clock. Yesterday, or this past Monday's meeting was rescheduled till next Monday, so I will advise Justine Hunt that she should include you in those going forward.
Please do. I would appreciate that. And could you also give them Ashley's name as well?
Sure.
Thank you. Topic's not recently anticipated. Well, certainly, this qualifies, as I didn't anticipate to be the chairman. I want to, I want to extend a, a few words of gratitude and thank you to former chairperson Marr, who worked tirelessly on behalf of this district and who put in hours and hours of sort of unseen labor to benefit our children, our staff, our families, and has always taken responsibilities very seriously. And it's a chair, excuse me, it's a position that I think is very, very thankless, and I don't think people understand how many additional meetings, how many additional document reviews, how many additional conversations, how many different additional, in Mrs. Marr's case, meeting minutes, things that have to be drafted, email correspondence, representational and outside groups go into that position. And, and you are to be commended for your efforts. I think that you represented the board, the district, very, very well, and you were very diligent, and I think you, you ran, you conducted very professional meetings and incorporated the, the opinions and, and, and comments and perspectives of all those stakeholders that we have here. And so I'd like to extend on behalf of the committee and the district, a word of thanks to you for everything you did. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Craig. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And, and I would also like to extend a word of welcome to Mrs. Saint Ange, who I am very excited to work with because I have always really respected those who have, and I'm speaking of, because it's my personal opinion, those who sought positions after having participated as a stakeholder. And I recall seeing you in many meetings, and you've shown a lot of interest, and you've always been there to participate before you came here and, and ran to hold and elect a position on the committee. And I think everyone needs to know that you had a very defined interest before doing that, and I'm very happy for you. So congratulations on your new role, and I really look forward to working with you, as I believe all of us do. I think we're very lucky to have you.
Thank you so much.
And then officially welcome our new Director of Student Services and, and our new Director of Finance and Operations. Look forward to working with all of you as well. Very, very excited. Two very, very critical roles, and you come very highly recommended. So congratulations to the two of you and welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on, I don't think there's a need for executive session today, unless I'm mistaken.
Chairman, if I could, which is a point of order, I do have two items that were not anticipated, then it's gifts. So I'd like to, it's always good when you can end the meeting with a gift, but I'd like to, to bring that up for a vote with your permission?
Please do. I'm sorry for, I think that there was a last-minute email about that, and I had forgotten all about it. I apologize. Please, please, let's do that.
Not, not a problem at all. I will share my screen here so you can see the first gift. So this is a gift of books that promote anti-racism, diversity, and real social justice in many, many ways. The, the contributor is named Kristen Banning. Kristen was a former, she's a Cohasset resident and will have students, children or children coming into the Cohasset Public School District. She was interested in donating these books and had contacted the librarians and principals, knowing that it's a possibility there might be a, an acceptance of this gift. And the list is quite comprehensive there for various groups within the community, and it amounts to 900, I'm sorry, within the school community, the various schools. I think I mentioned that Kristen was a former Deer Hill and Ausgood student, so that's also very nice to see her giving back to her, her hometown. And it totals 71 books and $925.21. So I'd look for a vote if I could, or I'd leave it to you to determine if we'll vote for the.
Absolutely. This is wonderful. What a wonderful gift this is, and we're so lucky to have this. Please, I'd ask for any, any motions to vote on acceptance of this gift as described by Dr. Sullivan. Motion made by Mrs. Coleri. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded made by Mrs. Marr. All in favor, roll call, please.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Lydia Saint Ange.
Hi, Craig McClellan. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much to that generous donor.
Yeah, a big, big thank you to Kristen Banning. So the next one, if I could, is a, can you see the screen there? Gift to athletics?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Think I get this down eventually. I'm not quite there yet. So anyway, the gift to athletics. And if you'd like more information regarding each of these, I can provide that. But I thought, this was just brought to my attention today, and I thought, because we had a committee meeting, that I might be able to produce it. The first gift was $3,000 from the Clark Chatterton.
Hold on one moment, please. Dr. Sullivan, Mrs. Marr, do you have a point to make?
Yes, we've already voted to approve the Clark Chatterton Fund gift and the wrestling. I thought that Chatterton was in October. This came about as I was writing out the thank you letters to all of the, the people who donated to us. I was looking at the athletic. Yes. We've already voted to approve the Clark Chatterton Fund gift and the wrestling. I thought that Chatterton was in October. This came about as I was writing out the thank you letters to all of the, the people who donated to us. I was looking at the athletic donations, and I asked our athletic director if he had sent thank you notes and did he have contact information. So the first two were on the list, and he came back and told me that there were the second two, the $3,500 from the boosters and $5,700 from the basketball boosters. So that's, we need to vote on, on those two because we have not voted on those. But that's how this came about, and that's why it's a little confusing.
That's, I'm sorry, I, thank you. I actually didn't remember that. So, so yes, to Ellen's point, then, we are voting on the last two here on the list, which is $3,500 from soccer boosters to go towards assistant coaches' salaries, and then $5,700 donation from the basketball boosters. It was back in April, but to go to the assistant coaches' salaries. So.
Perfect. And are these, are these all anonymous? Oh, soccer boosters, excuse me. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so soccer boosters and class basketball boosters, the two donors in these respectively. Are there, is there any discussion on these points? I don't think there would be. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for two separate votes here. First, we're going to seek a motion for the vote to approve the gift of $3,500 received from the soccer boosters to go towards assistant coaches' salaries. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by, was that Mrs. Marr?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. St. Ange. Thank you very much. All in favor, please indicate by roll call vote.
I, Lydia St. Ange.
Sorry.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Craig McClellan.
And I.
That gift is accepted unanimously. Thank you very much. Second, seeking a motion for acceptance of the generous $5,700 donation received from the Cohasset basketball boosters for the assistant coaches' salaries. Is there a motion on the floor?
Sorry, so moved.
Moved by Mrs. Marr. Is there a seconded?
Seconded.
Excuse me, is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Coleri. All in favor, please indicate in a roll call vote.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Lydia St. Ange.
Hi, Craig McClellan. That gift is unanimously approved. That completes the gifts, Dr. Sullivan?
That's it. The gifts keep on giving, but that's the end of them.
Okay, so back to the executive session. I don't think there's a reason to go into executive session. Does anyone have any? Seeing none, I will accept any motions on the floor to adjourn the Wednesday, July 8, 2020, school committee meeting.
So moved.
Sorry, Ellen.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Seconded made by Mrs. Marr. All in favor, please indicate in a roll call vote.
Hi, Ashley Coleri.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Lydia St. Ange.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Craig McClellan. The school committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman.
All right. Bye-bye, everyone. Have a nice night.
Bye. Thank you.